This is Chris's baby? Cool. Hi! And who knows that I'm a dog about this? It's just irresistible, okay. You are. It is a good distraction. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here today. Good afternoon, colleagues. We're going to dive right into our stated agenda. First, we will vote on the following land use item: City of Yes zoning for economic opportunity, or ZEO. The council has modified the New York City Department of City Planning's DC, or DCPs, proposed citywide zoning text amendment to update the city's outdated commercial zoning regulations. The council made modifications to fourteen of its eighteen proposals to address concerns raised about them during the public review process by including limitations and safeguards that help strike the right balance between expanding opportunities for local businesses, creating jobs, and protecting neighborhoods and quality of life for all New Yorkers. This text amendment also includes the council's priority of preserving manufacturing districts and enhancing the development of the industrial sector, which provides good-paying jobs and can prepare our city for a clean energy economy and future. The council also secured commitments for the city to address the environmental and health impacts of last-mile facilities and trucking, including to advance a zoning reform that would require a special permit to operate the facilities, support for legislation to regulate emissions associated with their operations, and continued development of a program supporting waterborne freight as an alternative to truck traffic. Other non-zoning commitments secured by the council include a budget commitment to hire new DOB staff positions to launch proactive enforcement, four new employees, and an after-hours team for the Office of Nightlife to ensure establishments comply with laws and rules and boost in enforcement against unlicensed smoke shops. I thank all of our members who engage constructively in this process to deliver a result that is good for our city and neighborhoods and the Department of City Planning, including Director Dan Grotnick, for their partnership in making these important changes. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items: A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon renewing a forty-year Article Five tax exemption for the preservation of a rent-stabilized building in Councilmember Felice's district; A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon reviewing a forty-year Article Five tax exemption for the preservation of three rent-stabilized buildings in Councilmember Salamanca's district; A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon renewing a forty-year Article Five tax exemption for the preservation of a rent-stabilized building in Councilmember O'Say's district; A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon authorizing a forty-year Article Eleven tax exemption for the preservation of three rent-stabilized buildings in Councilmember Salamanca's district. Today, we're also voting on several home rule resolutions: SLR eight, to increase the number of intersections where traffic control signal photo violation monitoring systems may be installed and operated; SLR nine, to provide WTC-related benefits to certain employees who worked at the Verazano Bridge toll facility; SLR ten, to allow certain members of the New York City Fire Department Pension Fund to receive a membership date attributable to service in the titles of Police Cadet Program or Police Cadet Program Two in the NYPD Cadet Program; SLR eleven, eligibility for participants in the automotive twenty-five-year age fifty pension plan with more than thirty years of credited service who remain in active service after age sixty-two to receive a service retirement benefit equivalent to the standard service benefit received by Tier Four members with the same age in service; SLR twelve, health insurance coverage for surviving spouses or domestic partners of members of the FDNY employed as fire protection inspectors; SLR thirteen, owner liability for failure of an operator to comply with street cleaning parking rules and access to records prepared pursuant to street cleaning parking rules; SLR fourteen, amending the definition of overtime ceiling. Next, we'll vote on the following resolutions and bills: Resolution one fifty-seven, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would recognize June sixth annually as D-Day Remembrance Day in the city of New York in honor of the courage and sacrifice of the Allied soldiers on the Normandy beaches in France. Resolution two thirty-two, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S. twenty-nine sixty, A. fifty-seven forty-one to provide for annual adjustment of the maximum income threshold eligibility for the Senior Citizen Rent Increase Exemption, or SCRI; Disability Rent Increase Exemption, or DRI; Senior Citizen Homeowners Exemption, SHE; and Disabled Homeowners Exemption, DHE, programs by any increase in the Consumer Price Index. Resolution three sixty-five, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S. seventy-eight forty-three, A. forty-eight eighty-eight in relation to conditional release of eligible people who are incarcerated and complete post-secondary degrees or programs. Resolution seventy-nine B, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S. thirty-one, three fifteen, A. fourteen sixteen, which would authorize New York City to set a five mile per hour speed limit on streets participating in the Open Streets Program. Currently, the city can only recommend that drivers slow down to five miles per hour when operating on an open street with limited vehicular access. Next, we will, we will vote on a package of bills to assess and support the workforce and health needs of our newest arrivals. This week, President Biden issued an executive order to temporarily suspend the processing of most asylum claims at the southern border. Under this order, migrants who cross without authorization, barring certain extenuating circumstances, would not be eligible for asylum. Migrants are fleeing dire humanitarian conditions in their home countries, especially given the dangerous journeys they must undertake to reach the United States. We know that seeking asylum is often their final option for safety. There have been serious concerns raised about the impact this decision will have on the safety and well-being of families and children who are in desperate need of asylum. Resolution three forty B, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, calls on the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services to eliminate filing fees for humanitarian benefit applications and subsequent employment authorization applications. The resolution also calls on Congress and the president to move significant funding to USCIS to cover the funding loss by the eliminated filing fees. Introduction eighty-four A, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, would require a designated mayoral office or city agency to develop a survey of migrants, including those who have recently arrived and those seeking asylum, to understand the skills, economic opportunities, and workforce development obstacles they face. The designated agency or office would report to the council the results of the survey and provide recommended policies and investments to support the economic well-being and success of migrants residing in New York City. Introduction eighty-five A, also sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, would require a designated mayoral office or city agency to develop a health survey of migrants' long-term health needs, chronic conditions, and healthcare access needs. The designated agency or office would report to the council the results of the survey and provide recommendations to identify and anticipate the health needs of migrants residing in New York City. I now invite Councilmember Rivera to the podium to discuss her package of legislation.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Wow. So I'm Carlina Rivera, very proud to have three immigration-related proposals before the council today. I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for your leadership and support and for your words. We're in an era of global displacement, and the number of individuals and families seeking asylum in the United States has risen significantly in recent years, and we are seeing that firsthand right here in New York City. Since 2022, over 201,000 individuals seeking asylum have entered New York City's social service agency systems. We still have more than 65,000 individuals seeking asylum currently in the care of the city. And as elected leadership, we must be more proactive in providing opportunities for people to transition out of the shelter system and into more permanent living situations. In speaking with community organizers, I've heard that we must accumulate data to understand how the city has supported work permit applications, entrepreneurship, workforce development initiatives, and access to healthcare in order to identify the gaps in our efforts. Today, I'm proud to advance introductions eighty-four and eighty-five legislation that will require the administration to conduct workforce and healthcare-related surveys for asylum seekers, laying the groundwork for a more effective humanitarian response going forward. By collecting data on the economic challenges and opportunities for individuals seeking asylum, city officials can better direct investments to community-based organizations doing certifications and training and facilitate connections to open roles as more migrants secure employment authorization. Similarly, a comprehensive survey and collection of anonymized data will help our public care system respond and adapt to a changing landscape of needs and ensure that we better understand barriers to securing quality insurance and healthcare. And these reports related to these surveys will be published online by September thirtieth, 2025. So just yesterday, The City News actually told a story about a woman named Kathy Contreras who migrated in October, escaping violence in her home country of Ecuador. She hadn't worked in eight months. She walked into the Workers Justice Project, and her love for education actually supported her through many certifications and trainings, and she would go on to get a job removing asbestos. That is what she is doing today for work. She was actually a high school teacher back in Ecuador, and eventually she would like to return to the classroom. This is the type of information I feel that we need as a city to support someone like Ms. Contreras. She was a teacher. She can clearly, she is bilingual. She can clearly be an asset to our city, especially our education system, and we just don't know how many Ms. Contreras there are out there. And this survey will help us acquire that information. The information collected will also increase transparency and access to healthcare, housing, asylum navigation support, and employment. And ultimately, we want to ensure that city agencies are held accountable and can appropriately respond to areas needing improvement. Additionally, Resolution three forty, calling on the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services, USCIS, to eliminate filing fees for humanitarian benefit applications and subsequent employment authorization applications. And we're calling on Congress and the president to move significant funding to UC-CIS to cover the funding loss by the eliminated filing fees. These are just very prohibitive costs for people, especially in these dire situations. And so we feel it is appropriate for these fees to be eliminated. And with that, just ensuring that we're really looking at our legacy, our legacy in accepting immigrants and families into our city as an important part of New York City and really just our history. That's our legacy. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions afterwards, and I want to thank the speaker for your leadership and all of my colleagues for their support in the crafting of these bills. And of course, to the advocates who have been instrumental in ensuring that we do this the right way and implement it in targeting programs and services eventually, will further support community-based organizations that are doing the work. Thank you.
Next, we will vote on a package of legislation to improve workplaces and promotional opportunities in the municipal workforce. In April, the council released its 2024 Pay Disparities Report, which found that persistent gender and racial wage gaps in the municipal workforce are largely the result of women of color being paid less, given their concentration in job titles that consistently provide lower wages. These bills seek to address these gender and racial wage gaps by increasing access to opportunities. Resolution three oh six A, sponsored by Councilmember Carmen de La Rosa, would call on the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, or DCAST, to grant additional points on promotional exams to examinees who have completed the agency's executive development and management and supervision trainings, or to examinees who have earned a degree or certificate from CUNY or a similarly accredited institution. Introduction seven sixty-seven A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require DCAST to create a workplace culture survey to be completed by municipal employees every other year on an anonymous and voluntary basis. The survey would ask employees about their opinions on their agency's workplace culture, management practices, likelihood of departing the agency, and other equity-related concerns. This bill would require the Commissioner of DCAST to submit a report on the findings from the survey responses. This bill would also clarify that agency's annual reports on their efforts to remedy pay disparities and occupational segregation should include both internal and external outreach. Councilmember Hudson could not join us today, but we thank her for her hard work on this legislation. Introduction eight oh nine A, sponsored by Councilmember Carmen de La Rosa, would require DCAST to publish a report on its website every other year regarding DCAST's determination of promotional exam applicant eligibility. In particular, the bill would require the Commissioner to report on the factors considered when making determinations to fill municipal vacancies from pools of direct-line employees or to expand eligibility to collateral line employees or comparable position employees. And introduction seven forty-three A, also sponsored by Councilmember Carmen de La Rosa, would require municipal agencies in coordination with DCAST to offer career counseling to eligible municipal employees to advise them of career advancement processes and opportunities. This bill would also require agencies to conduct outreach to eligible employees regarding career counseling services and for DCAST to create written materials to provide guidance. Furthermore, this bill would require DCAST to submit a report regarding municipal employees' utilization of career counseling services and summarize the feedback the agency has received. I invite Councilmember de La Rosa to the podium to discuss her important legislation.
Good afternoon, all. Thank you, Speaker Adams, for your support and to the colleagues who are here, and also to our legislative staff for all the hard work on this package and on our pay equity report. Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Carmen de La Rosa, proud to chair the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. At today's stated meeting, we are passing three legislative solutions that are directly influenced by our latest pay equity report. Introduction seven forty-three A and eight oh nine A give our recruitment and promotion, give us recruitment and promotional mechanisms, additional proactive tools to ensure that municipal employees are aware of their career development opportunities and to show our continued commitment to address occupational segregation that has persisted in our public sector workforce for far too long. Municipal employees are the backbone of our city, and we must foster growth and opportunities in our efforts to hire and retain a diverse workforce. The Committee on Civil Service and Labor has kept a close eye on vacancies across our agencies, and we know managerial titles are typically hard to recruit for. Our pay equity legislation equips our current employees and agencies in transitioning civil servants into higher positions. If they are eligible, addressing delays and difficulties in our hiring process. Women, particularly women of color, are disproportionately underrepresented in promotions and hired salaried positions. Women of color saw the smallest improvement in their pay gap between 2018 and 2021. That is an unacceptable reality. We aim to shape our public sector workforce to reflect the diversity that makes our city great, but it is not enough to just recruit a diverse workforce if we are not elevating that diversity into the higher ranks. As a co-chair of the Women's Caucus in a majority women's city council and the most diverse city council, I may add, in the history of our city, we know women get the job done. We see it in action every single day, and we do it well. Thank you to Speaker Adams for your support in passing this important legislation, and we look forward to closing the gender and racial pay gap across municipal workforces in our city. Thank you.
Finally, we will be voting on Introduction nine oh eight A, my bill to require council advice and consent as part of the appointment process for twenty city agency commissioners, adding to those already required to undergo this step. There's been a lot of public conversation about this legislation, and I want to be clear that advice and consent is not a new concept, including for this legislative body. Several positions have required advice and consent of the council for decades. Since the beginning of this administration in 2022, the council has approved more than thirty-five of its nominees for appointment without issue. Advice and consent was established by the founders of our democracy as a safeguard to protect the public interest in the appointment of top government positions from the interests of individuals. It is used in many of the nation's largest municipalities, our state governments, including our own and the federal government. Advice and consent works, and we already have a process in place that this legislation builds on. Contrary to what some have claimed, this legislation does not usurp the mayor's power to appoint commissioners and top city officials, and at no point would the council be able to choose its own nominees to lead agencies. Introduction nine oh eight A adds transparency and democratic accountability by requiring a confirmation process that, again, already happens with dozens of positions. Advice and consent moves the appointment process out of the shadows, allowing greater transparency in public engagement. It's good government and can be beneficial for nominees by providing an opportunity for them to demonstrate their qualifications, hear about the range of issues they will confront, and build positive relationships with the council and the public they're serving. I'd also like to address the questions that have been raised about timing and whether this bill would slow down the process based on the schedule of a few council members or leave an agency without leadership. That's just not true. The process contains guardrails to ensure the council action within thirty days of receiving an appointment. If there is a vacancy, the first deputy or a designee of the mayor would serve in an acting capacity, which is already the current process. The city's law department currently has a highly qualified acting corporation council who knows the department as well as anyone. The current FDNY commissioner served as acting commissioner until she was appointed in October of 2022. We're talking about adding twenty city agency commissioners out of more than eighty such commissioner-level positions. That is a fraction of the positions that could be subjected to advice and consent, so this is rather incremental. The reality is that the administration does not make all of its appointments at the same time, or even within the same week or within the same month. The council can work in accordance with the scheduled need for appointments. We already do this. Ultimately, advice and consent promotes good governance by ensuring a focus on qualifications and identifying any conflicts of interest or ethical issues on the front end to be resolved, which often happens now. It incentivizes the nomination of qualified appointees who are accountable to New Yorkers and the public interest, not political loyalty or patronage. Advice and consent is a safeguard, or even anti a Tammany Hall-like environment where commissioner positions are doled out simply because of their political allegiance to one person or another, or to pursue some other interests beyond the public's, as Susan Lerner from Common Cause outlined in her testimony on this bill. We want to strengthen our city government, strengthen our representative democracy, and ensure that our agencies are led by dedicated and highly qualified public servants to fulfill their responsibilities to all New Yorkers. That is what this bill is about, and that is why we're advancing it. That concludes our stated agenda. We are joined today by some of my veteran colleagues in the council who have been there, done that, including Deputy Speaker Ayala, Councilmembers Gail Brewer, Jim Gennaro, Carlina Rivera, Carmen de La Rosa was here as well, she served in the state. They have decades of experience, decades of experience in government on both the executive and legislative sides. They can give greater context on advice and consent, which is on topic today. And with that, we will go ahead and start with on-topic questions first.
Thank you. On advising consent, the bill underwent an amendment on Friday to add the City Planning Chair and also take some other commissioner-level posts off the proposed list of new advising consent positions. Can you explain the logic behind that move and specifically why the City Planning Chair should be subject to advising consent? On a similar note, the mayor and his team has made clear they oppose this bill. We've seen this development before, where the mayor vetoes a bill that he doesn't like. If that comes to pass, do you think the council has the votes to override, and would that be the plan if he vetoes?
Thanks for the question, Chris. The legislation excluded positions that are linked to state law, like the schools chancellor, probation commissioner, and those removed, emergency management and veteran services, as well as uniformed first responder commissioners like FDNY and NYPD. This bill is just to start to expanding advice and consent and the conversation about its checks and balances. As far as the other piece that you mentioned, the council does intend to go forward with this legislation. In the unfortunate circumstance that it is vetoed, the council will proceed as we normally have with past vetoes with this administration.
And specifically on the City Planning Chair, I'm just wondering if you can elaborate a little bit on why that was added. That was the only position that was added that's part of the agreement?
Well, again, we already do have partial oversight in that agency, and this gives consistency to that.
More on advice and consent. Do you expect, when do you want to see this go on the ballot before voters? And relatedly, is there any discussions if it's considered suing the mayor to block the Charter of Mission Commission, as the council has done in the past?
No to the second part of your question. The first part of your-
No discussions, or you don't want to?
There have been no discussions, and there is no intention to do that. We do intend to go forward with this presentation on the November ballot. That's our intention.
But can you explain that, because I thought that Charter of Mission happens, this can't be up to me?
We're going to see where we go again. We're going to let, going to let, you know, the process play out for whatever it is. There is language in the bill that would allow this change to be placed before the New York City, before New York City voters in a subsequent election or in a citywide special election. And again, this is not about, you know, as some have, you know, spoken, this isn't about a short-term gain at all. This is about long-term improvement of city government.
I have Chicago and LA if you want. That's helpful to you.
Hi, Liz.
Just to follow up on Jeff's question, if it doesn't appear on the November ballot and then not on the subsequent ballot, what recourse does the council have enforcing the mayor's hand to eventually schedule it for some election into the future? Is there a way in which this commission could just delay it in perpetuity while he's in office? And then I had a second question from my colleague, Bridget. Well, yes, 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 yes. It's on Councilmember Restler's CFP reform bill.
That's not coming up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you can talk to him afterwards, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, as far as the commission is concerned, again, the commission has its work to do, the council has our work to do. We intend to have this legislation remain. Again, if it is unfortunately vetoed, the council will continue to do the work that we always do when it comes to vetoes, and we will do our work. The legislation is going to remain, whether the commission does anything on their part, which quite frankly was not what the public has been told this commission is set up to do anyway. So we'll have to see the specifics that come out from this commission. We have all been told that it has something to do with public safety and other things. So we'll see how this plays out as far as the commission is concerned.
Would you consider forming your own Charter of Mission?
That is, that is, that would definitely be a consideration. It would not be something that we would not entertain.
Thank you, Speaker. On City of Yes, but also other stuff, can you talk about, I mean, I know the timing didn't quite align, we were negotiating that a couple weeks ago, and the advice and consent stuff has come in a little more recently, but could you just talk generally about whether it's a challenge to negotiate this complicated thing on that with the administration, and there are also these separate distractions and sort of tensions, and whether it's going to continue to be a challenge on the meeting of the City of Yes package if you're going to have these separate issues?
That is a great question, Nick. And the way that I will respond to this, and my colleagues can attest to this, is that we act and react with every piece of the pie. We don't take a look at the entire pie as one ginormous thing that we're all lumping together. Everything that we do is compartmentalized very, very precisely. So the answer is that the advice and consent bill is totally different and worked-
So the answer is that the advice and consent bill is totally different and worked with and on separately than the City of Yes. City of Yes had several components, two of which so far the council has overwhelmingly supported. We will pass another piece of it today, something that we've done collaboratively as these other things are going on, the budget, everything else. So we're going to continue to work in collaboration, no matter what, no matter what our work entails.
Also on advising consent, so I know you said that you were told that the charter revision comes down to public safety concerns, but at the hearing, Stan and I went today and we're going to look at the advocate. She called for advising consent to be completely repealed as part of the commission changes. So are you concerned that the purpose of commission is sort of to shift to focus on advising consent?
I'm not concerned at this point. The commission, again, is going to do what the commission is there to do. They're going to listen to the public, they're going to take the public's concerns, and they're going to, they're going to work with whatever information comes from the public as they see fit in their capacity. Thank you.
Hi, Speaker.
Hi, Kelly.
I have a question in line with that earlier. You know, the mayor keeps on saying that you and him have a great relationship publicly, and there's this tension seemingly behind the scenes. Do you agree with those statements that he keeps on saying, or do you disagree with that? You know, you have disagreements, but you have a good relationship. And then back to advising consent. Lisa Zornberg specifically called out the council on Tuesday, suggesting that there's a work ethic issue in general. When it comes to appointments, she said that it's constantly the council pushing back everything. You can't work in the summer because it's the summer. You push it all the way back to December, and it's the holidays. I wonder if you can speak directly to that statement that she's suggesting it's a council can't work well with that.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. It's good to see you in the red room. The first question, my relationship with the mayor, that has not changed, so he is correct about that. We still do maintain a very cordial relationship. And again, I've answered the question so many times. We separate that from the work that we do and the way that we lead, which are two totally different things. So where we agree on some things, which have been a lot of things, quite frankly, but our disagreements are, you know, as you all see, they're significant, and we're going to continue to work, as we do, on both sides, you know, of this beautiful building in the way that we do. As far as Lisa Zornberg's words, I really found her words to be unfortunate. It was quite interesting to me, and I will say this off the top. There was an opportunity. It's called city council oversight in a hearing, right? So this is what we do, and we give those opportunities for anybody to participate. That's where, in my opinion, that information should have been provided. That is what we expected, and we, quite frankly, did not get that. Her remarks and thoughts would have been appropriately put on the record, where they should have been put in city council chambers. That was, that was the opportunity to engage, to provide that position and discuss it, but they chose not to show up and chose instead to use a press conference to do that. So, you know, I don't agree with a lot of what was said, quite frankly, so, yeah. I'm going to ask Jim to.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for opening the door for, you know, some of us to come and voice our opinion, speaking for myself. Someone who was, you know, taught American state and local government at Queens College for eight years, someone who's been on the council and with the council for 27 years, started my city government service in 1983 under Koch. I've seen a lot happen.
What's that? What's that? I, yeah.
Just so you know.
Gail's the greatest of all time, and this is now on the record. But the speaker has a way of being very gracious, one of the things I admire about her. But I, and the subject of tension has come up. You know, one can have a good relationship and still have tension, but the tension has not come from us. If you wanted to see tension, if you wanted to see disrespect, if you wanted to see petulance, you know, you should have, maybe you were there at the hearing or saw the hearing that first the administration said that they weren't invited, and then they said that we were invited, but we thought you were joking. This is, this is, what are we talking about? This is, this is like a Fellini film. And, you know, to the extent that, that posture that they took at that hearing, which is not to show up, and then have someone at the very end of the hearing deliver a statement under oath that had falsehoods in it with the mayor's signature, is not the way, in my opinion, that, you know, the mayor and his staff, like, ought to be conducting themselves. This ought to be a process that we are, you know, engaging with together, and we wouldn't even be here today if it wasn't absolutely necessary, because we feel, I feel, speaking for myself, that I've seen appointments made that are somewhat questionable, and so I think the mayor's administration, in my opinion, was kind of asking for this, and now they're going to get this very measured bill, 20 more names, not the end of the world. What is the mayor afraid of? What is the mayor afraid of to have this go before the voters and have them be, you know, educated and informed as to what's at stake, and they can decide themselves whether this moves city government forward and, you know, further into the light and further into openness, or takes the appointment process, like, back into the shadows? That's for the public to make. And for the mayor, again, in my opinion, to appoint a, you know, Charter revision commission whose sole purpose is, in my opinion, you know, just to delay and, you know, to thwart, you know, the council's legitimate attempt to bring more daylight and better government, when the council, all we're really doing is, in a way, so to speak, kind of catching up, you know, catching up to other levels of government. This goes back to the Federalist Papers, and it is, I am profoundly disappointed in the level of, you know, enmity and petulance and comments that, as the speaker said, should have been made at the council but weren't. Instead, we got, you know, perjured testimony and stories about how they were invited, but they thought it was a joke. Well, this is not a joke, and this is happening, and the mayor can do all he wants to try to, you know, stymie what we're trying to do in the name of good government and to move this body forward. You know, back when I started here in 2002, when I started the council, there were no, there were no committees of the council that even sworn the witnesses. So I sat here as a staff member for 12 years with no witnesses even being sworn in. This was a body back then that wasn't kind of taking its job seriously, in my opinion, by not swearing in witnesses. That's just an example. So I came forward, I started swearing in witnesses, it caught on, the council does this, and so, you know, the council, you know, continues to be moved forward, particularly by this speaker, and I think the mayor should have much more respect than that, than what he's shown so far in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. I too am very supportive of this bill. I just want to say I spoke to, because I have a lot of friends in Los Angeles and Chicago. In Chicago, they've been doing this for years, no problem whatsoever. The way they do it is the person who is nominated for the job of commissioner goes as an acting person for the first 30 days, if that's how long it is, and they then go through the city council, both for the committee, and then they are up or down for the full board of the city council. The only two jobs that are not included are the procurement officer, which we do not have as an appointment, and the inspector general. Los Angeles, 99% go through, but they do do, as Chicago and New York does, background checks. One example, which was caught by the city council, not by the mayor, was Lee Williams was nominated for, by the mayor for harbor commissioner. We don't have that. His wife is a longshore woman working in LA. That was a conflict of interest, so they moved her to the Long Beach waterfront to work. And there was another fire commissioner who came through some years ago. He had some words in Spanish that are not appropriate, wasn't caught by the mayor, but was caught by the city council, and he was no longer appointed. So same process. You go to the city council, you have a committee meeting, you are then voted up or down, most of them are voted, no problems, lots of transparency, no mayor's upset, no city council's upset. It's a really good process. Thank you.
Welcome to the red room. Can you state your name here, Ayala?
Sure. I'm Caroline. I'm the speaker.
Welcome.
On the bill that was just introduced by Council-
We're going to come back to that. That's off topic.
Oh, that's off topic. Okay.
We'll come back to it.
Thank you.
Any more on-topic questions on what we're going on today, Charter revision commission? Someone else?
I have a question for Councilman Gennaro. You just mentioned there's some appointments that the mayor has made that you find questionable, and that this might actually be a response to that. What appointments are you talking about?
Nice try.
Very nice try.
Excellent try. I don't blame you. I'd say the same thing if I were you. Nice try. I'm not going there, because then it gets into personalities. You know, we've, any astute observer of this administration, again, not to speak for other people, I'll just speak for myself again, that what I think the council is looking for, because once, you know, once the mayor has to make an appointment, that is going to be subject to all kinds of daylight, all kinds of vetting, I think that kind of changes the dynamic. I think it is, you know, human nature as a mayor to prize loyalty, to ingratiate, you know, the administration to various constituencies and, you know, political leaders or whatever. So this is, this is human nature. I get it. But, you know, the overriding factor is that the person has to be competent and has to be able to take the reins of an agency and, you know, and perform with the excellence that is needed in this, in this city. And I think this will force that to happen. I think that's a good thing. The authors of the Federalist Papers thought so too. Thank you very much.
Another thing, though, you also said Tiffany Raspberry delivered perjury testimony.
Yes, I believe that to be true, and I articulated that on the record. She indicated, she was speaking with the mayor, and, you know, indicated that, that the mayor wouldn't, that the mayor would never try to have an impact on council appointments as to who would be chair of a certain committee, or who would even be speaker. And so this was his, this was his sworn statement that, you know, Tiffany was sent up there to deliver, and everyone from, he to Zanzibar, knows that he had a dog in the fight, like, when it came to the speaker race, which, if I were mayor, I'd kind of try that too. And there's a whole host of things that go on when there's a new administration coming in and a new speaker, a new leader. So who's going to be speaker, who's going to be chair? The unions get involved, various stakeholders get involved. It's a whole, you know, it's a whole lot of sausage making. And so, but for him to declare that he would, that he would never do that, when in fact he has been all about that, not that I kind of fault him, but it just, it just shows the disingenuousness of their position, and I think that because this is so white-hot for them, that this is, this is like the end of the world, where you're like, you know, inventing Charter revision commissions as a roadblock, like, you're not sending people to testify, saying that you weren't invited. This is, this is, this is like hysteria, and this is not what I expect from, you know, a mayor who's running a very tight ship. He should be open to the ideas of good government, show up on something that is obviously so important to him and his administration. Once they're invited, show up and say what you have to say. Somebody showed up at the very end, they changed gears, sent somebody there, read the statement, you know, she wouldn't take questions, even though this is such an important thing. And I think, you know, the mayor, speaking for myself, should have been, you know, more responsive to the process, rather than figuring out, you know, Charter revision commissions that will serve only to block what we're trying to do in the name of good government. Thank you.
I mean, did perjuries describe, though? I'm just wondering.
Let me, let me-
Like, what were we talking about? Was it a crime?
I'm saying what was in that statement was not factual and not true, and I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a simple geologist who, you know, chairs the community environment of protection, you know, resiliency and waterfronts. It's just a little plug for my committee, you should all follow it very closely. And so I said on the record that day that what was mentioned in, that what was stated in that letter was factually inaccurate, and so wherever you want to take it from there, you know, the powers that be can take it, but I heard it, I knew it to be factually inaccurate, and I said so on the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can you say anything to discuss?
Speaker, have you and the mayor been able to sit down and talk about this legislation? You know, you have a cordial relationship. Could you possibly work it out behind closed doors?
Anything's possible, of course. We have not spoken about this particular legislation. We've been knee-deep in budget, quite frankly, so, but yeah, sure, anything's possible.
Melissa, then we're going to go to a few more topics.
Thank you. Hi, Madam Speaker.
Hi, Melissa. Welcome back. Good to see you.
Two things. One, can you just, forgive me for not knowing the full list, but can you just go over, if not the full list, which positions are on the list, or particular considerations about why those-
Let me see if I have the list.
Positions that were put on the list and why? And also, is there anything that Councilmember Gennaro said that you disagree with?
In the words of Councilmember Gennaro, "Good try, Melissa." I will let Councilmember Gennaro stand on his own. I am looking for the entire list, and I don't think that I have the full list in here, surely.
Was there a, was there one commissioner or agency that you felt strongly about subsequently, you know, having?
Oh, Lincoln has the list.
Do you want to?
Yeah, thank you. Let me see if I can read. Okay, here's the full list. DOB, ACS, DCAS, DCWP, DCLA, DDC, DEP, DOF, DOHMH, DHS, HPD, DO-IT, DPR, DSNY, SBS, DSS, DOT, DYCD, DIFTA, and DCP. Thank you, Lincoln.
So is that, would you just say anything about why those agencies were the ones selected? I see a lot of social services in Congress.
Yeah, once, once again, we selected those agencies. Again, they are only a fraction of the entire number of agencies that could have been included but were not. These are agencies that the council in particular and our constituents particularly work with very closely. And again, the ones that were eliminated have to do with state, more or less, more or less state involvements, these do not.
Off-topic questions. Come back to, can you say your name a little louder?
Yes, Carolina.
Carolina. Thank you.
On this sanctuary bill that was just introduced by Councilmembers, would you please share your thoughts on that bill? I mean, I have access to the text, and also, can you please describe what you consider to be, like, an ideal operation between NYPD and ICE?
I'm going to ask you to repeat the second part of your question, because I didn't hear it.
Sure. Yeah, and describe what you consider to be an ideal operation between NYPD and ICE.
Thank you for the questions, and welcome to the red room. Good to see you. As far as the bills on sanctuary introduced, again, as I speak about with any legislation, that bill is going to go through the process, as all pieces of legislation do, and, you know, hearings take place, and then we go and we proceed from there. Ideal situation, that's a little bit more difficult to say, because I'm not sure that there is, quite frankly, an ideal situation in those types of circumstances. Each circumstance stands on its own merit, so I'm not sure that there is a quote-unquote "ideal" situation. I do expect professionalism from ICE, as we do from NYPD. Expect that, and we expect for the legal process to therefore take its course.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I wanted to ask you about Councilmember Restler's-
I wanted to ask you about Councilmember Wrestler's legislation today—
Well, he's here.
—on finance, what your decision is on those bills, and whether you think that the agency should be more willing to withhold the public matching funds for campaigns when there are questions about donors.
Well, again, Councilmember Wrestler's bills are going to go through the process. I will make my assessment as the process goes forward. Councilmember Wrestler, would you like to speak on your—
I think that's it. That's fine. I've already shared my thoughts with W. Martin.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Actually, would you like to talk about congestion pricing?
You know, congestion pricing, what I will say is that, first of all, we didn't have anything to do with it, with that, other than, you know, listen to people who thought that we had something to do with that. So, all things considered, I don't think that this necessarily should be looked at as a victory, all right? There's been no solution to the issues involved that were the basis of those concerns in the first place. I really thought that there should have been adjustments to congestion pricing to better account for the environmental and financial impacts on outer boroughs, particularly those lacking public transit access, like my own, and other issues. And we need to still find a reliable funding source for the MTA and greater access for communities that lack it. So we're still looking and trying to understand what the plan is and what the next steps are.
So would you support the business tax that's being suggested or proposed?
I don't support anything yet without conversation about it.
Thank you. A different topic, 2025 mayoral election.
Yeah.
Would you endorse Eric Adams' reelection, or is it the other candidate that's more interested?
I can't even answer that question right now.
I wish I would.
I guess, what is it, BMCC? And then he said, well, no.